Jennifer Bailey, the gal sitting next to you, she is the PBS staff person, the property evaluation specialist, who takes and compiles the information from our system, from our Orion system, and we match it to the CSA system, which is the county system.
Okay.
And so what we do is we match the two programs because we, at several different times throughout the year, we balance for different reasons. We balance for mobile homes, for personal property. So we're always continually balancing with the county.
Right.
And as we balance, then at the final step by law is that we give the whole values to the county at the end, as the end result. So as we're going through, we're actually taking information that is provided from our system based on the valuations that we've got of, have obtained throughout the year, throughout the county, based on sales, new constructions, permits, all of that information. That is what we're comparing to the information that we've provided to the county at the same time. And then at the end of the year, we just balance and make sure that all of the values that we have gathered through the full year have been come together in the certification totals.
Okay. You did answer my question.
Did I get your question? Okay.
Thank you. And so, excuse me, one more, so to get a copy of those sheets would go to you?
Sure.
The commission?
That'd be fine.
Or do I go to the clerk and recorder, or do I go to your office?
You can go to the clerk and recorder, you can go to Tammy, or you can go to the commissioners.
Okay.
It's up to you.
I was looking for a specific place to go get that.
We've certified the values of the county. So you get, it's available in several areas.
All right, thank you.
I have a question.
John.
When there is a dispute in the valuation of specialty mining properties, patent mining claims, which law do you use to make the analysis? The 1872 Miners' Law, the state statutory law, or us individuals constitutional law? Which law do you use?
We follow state law. Which follows federal law?
This hasn't, I didn't ask that about federal.
Okay.
Okay, as a constitutionalist like myself, you will not deal with constitutional law?
No, we do not.
So that means you're in violation of the law?
Okay, John, that's enough. John, that's enough. We will, I think we've talked to this before.
Yes.
If you need specific, more information on how the federal and state law goes, I can get you information of someone you can talk to, but I can't continue to dispute this with you each time we come to a commission meeting. So let me provide you with the information that you're requesting as to how the state of Montana follows law, okay? And then, once I have that, I will bring it to each meeting so that we can reread it if you're going to continue to ask the same question, but I'd like to provide that to you, okay?
Well, how come you didn't answer the last question?
John.
You're out of order.
No, I'm not. John?
I'm talking to her right now, just hold on.
I think your suggestion is right on, and I thank you very much for that. Franklin, do you have any other?
Can I provide that to the commission and then the commission?
I think that's.
Because you're here all the time in the county, because I'm not in the county, so if I could provide that to the commission?
Yes, absolutely, and we can get it to John from there. Franklin, do you have any final questions, comments, concerns?
You know, I think you've done pretty good answering. About everything, I think.
And just to recap here, I'll just tell you what I'm going to get for you guys, if that's okay? I am going to, for Franklin, I'm going to look up and see who I will give you for a contact at the state, who can tell you why or how the budget is set for the revenue that has to be returned back to the state. I believe that was the question that you wanted.
Can you make the contact, so you can explain to them what, if I try it, I might get bowled up to them.
Sure.
See what I mean?
Sure, I will.
If you could, I'd appreciate that.
Sure, and I will get that information to you. Then, Maura, I think that I just really had covered, you know, your questions regarding the mine and how we plan on doing staffing. Again, I just want to reiterate that that really isn't set yet, but as soon as the mine breaks free, and then we'll know more details at that time. As far as the office closures and things like that, we are, it was set for a public hearing that we would be closing the office for Broadwater on Fridays, so that that appraiser can work in a different county during that timeframe. And then, I will get back to John and give him a copy of why, or of what the procedure is for following federal, state, and then other law.
Except you're going to get that to us and I'll get it to John.
Right, right.
Yes.
I have one more question pertaining to this.
Yep.
In O-12.
John, you've already been out of order once, we're not going to revisit it.
Well, this is another issue pertaining, that I have talked to her.
I will let you go ahead, but I'm only going to give you this much leeway, so stay respectful.
I thought I was.
And civil.
I was. When I ask a direct question, you don't get an answer. My question is, in O-12, my son and I filed two tax protests. Nobody will address it, nobody will do it, and apparently it falls on the commissioner's backs to force somebody to do it, as it has not been done, and it's the exact same issue I talked with her.
Okay, thank you, John, you have been heard.
Okay, do I hear, do I hear an action about this? Because it's been said 50 times.
No, you do not, it's not on the agenda, so we cannot take action.
It's on the agenda, because we filed it. It's on the law, it's on the action.
Thank you, John.
How many times is it taken?
John, thank you very much. All right, well, thank you very much, Judy, unless you have anything else, we're all ears.
No, I think I've got just a good idea of what you're looking for, what the citizens of your county are looking for, so I will get that information to you. If you'll add me to the agenda for your next meeting, if you have any questions, so I can ask or answer them based on the information I provide, that might be helpful.
Okay.
And I'd be available for that.
Okay, you mean next, next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday.
Thanks.
Usually the sooner we can get it back to it, so that we can get the answers, you know, and if I haven't gotten you enough information, I can know where I need to go from there as well.
That sounds great, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. You betcha. All right, we are a little bit late, notice to purchasers, thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you, have a good day.
You too. Notice to purchasers, resolution, discussion, possible decisions. Is Julie here?
Hi.
All right, she may not be coming. This is the resolution that was adopted about two years ago, and thank you very much. I'm going to just, I'm not going to read this, because we've visited it now three times, so I'm not going to read it. If anybody would like a copy, or if you would like to request that I read it, I'd be more than happy to. But what this is essentially is, a resolution that was passed about two years ago, in August of 2011, and it, it was done to protect citizens who are buying property. It was never followed or adopted by the clerk and recorder's office, and the reason is, it came to our understanding about a month or so ago, that perhaps this county was overstepping our bounds and doing something that although well-intentioned, might be beyond what we are able to do. The law that we follow pertains to subdivisions, not to just the purchase of property. So we are going, we have revisited it, we have taken public comment a number of times in the past. This is still a win for those citizens who are buying property, because, I think we'll probably hear more on that here in just a minute, but the Realtors Association will have a legal forum and address this issue, and they will also incorporate this issue into their educational classes that Realtors are required by law to attend every year. So with that, do you have anything further to say? You look ready?
Madam Chair, good morning, thank you very much. Mark Semenich with Allen Association Realtors. I have two letters for you, one from ourselves and one from Doug Teters with Stewart Title Company, in support of the motion that you made last time to rescind the resolution that you adopted two years ago. And you're, I think the way you've conveyed the message is, is correct from our point of view. We think that the county may have stepped a bit beyond its authority in adopting the resolution specifically as it was adopted, and we think that there is a, maybe a better way to educate the buyers, make sure they're getting the communication, the information that they need, and we're committed to doing that through education of Realtors. The legal forum that we are providing on the 4th of October, I think it's the 4th, will specifically directed towards Realtors that operate in this geographic area of the state, and this information about the particular state statute is going to be included in that legal forum. The individual that teaches that legal forum is also the person that is, is, works with the State Board of Realty Regulations to put together a class called a Realtor Broker Core Course, and it's a course that every single real estate, licensed real estate agent in the state has to take every single year, that specific course. He's going to work to incorporate a discussion of this notification to purchasers in that class as well, so that we're confident that we're going to be getting the information out to Realtors in a manner that will put them in a better position to protect the consumers, making sure those purchasers of property are provided the information, understand what their, what their rights are in terms of receiving adequate notification about the properties that they're buying. So we think, we think action is being taken that can satisfy and protect the public, which is what I believe Broadwater County's intention was, and we think it's very appropriate now for the county to rescind the resolution that was adopted two years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Can you also speak to, what are the protections that are out there right now, aside from this resolution, that protect buyers of property or of homes from this type of situation?
Commissioner, there, it varies a little bit, it kind of depends on the particular title company and the work that they do. As a general rule, when a title company produces a title report on a, on a subject property as they're getting ready for the transaction, they will note any, any kind of obligations regarding that property, and so the title report would note that on a, on a particular subdivision, what the certificate of survey is, what the restrictions or, or requirements of a sanitation agreement are, if there are covenants, private covenant, those kind of things, those are recorded in the, in the title report. All the information, all documentation is not included, but they are referenced, so people can understand this information is there and available for, if they ask for it. In some cases, I understand the title companies actually record it in the deed itself, and so there will be references to the, that sanitation requirement or the certificate of subdivision approval within the deed itself. So there's some, there are some places that title companies deal with that do provide that level of protection.
Thank you. That's, that's a concern, is making sure that those who are buying are, are aware of what they are buying, and if there are laws out there that can protect them, I think that's important, it's good to hear that there are, and there's efforts by title companies to, to make sure that they're aware also of what they're buying. So Franklin, any comments?
Yeah, of course, some divisions are pretty well blind out, I mean, people pretty much know that. The concern I had was, this rancher, he's got a pivot, and they usually always have these dry corners, and so they go to sell them off, something like that, you know. I was concerned about the people getting the notice of, what the resolution was for, but since then, I've thought about more, and it's just more red tape for somebody to go through, where it should be taken care of by the sale.
Yes.
And, and if there's, I kind of, the way you talk, there's, you know, similar to a buy-sell that's in there, the buyer beware type situation, it's up to him to, or her to ask the questions. So I think everything is, is falling in places, but that was probably a good thing to get this resolution in there, which brought some of the stuff to a head, probably.
It didn't hurt, sir. It didn't hurt. Commissioner, I, I think, I think you're right, it has added some red tape, while the statute was specifically targeted towards subdivisions, the resolution that was adopted, applying, was intended to apply to all transactions, and so it could tie up that, you know, that quarter section that a rancher may be wanting to sell. And so it was, it was, it was targeting transactions that weren't intended for by the, by the statute. And that was one of the concerns we had, is that it really overreached, we think, in terms of what it was intended to do. But in terms of raising the issue, making sure that it's brought to more people's attention so they can focus on it, I think it had a very good effect in, from that regard.
That's pretty much all I have to say.
Okay. Are there any comments from the public on this particular issue? Pro, con, otherwise? John?
What I'm hearing right now is, this whole issue should be rescinded, and that's what he was saying. Would you make a recommendation that the, this thing, this way it was written, be rescinded, and either reconstruct a new one, or move on without it?
Madam Chair, I believe that the hearing today is because a motion was made at this meeting three weeks ago to rescind that, that's exactly what this is about.
Okay, I didn't hear that.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none. All right, Franklin, do you have a, what is your pleasure?
I think we should rescind that resolution.
Is that a motion?
Oh, and I'll put that in a more motion.
All right, I will second the multiple, and second it that we rescind Resolution Number 2011-14, a resolution establishes a Broadwater County notification to purchasers. All those in favor of this rescinding signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you very much for working with us on this, it means a lot to the citizens of this county.
Commissioner, it's been my pleasure, and thank you very much for your understanding and willingness to take this on, we appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Have a good day.
You too.
Thank you, Ann, I don't know that we need anything signed to rescind that, but I will follow up with Carla. All right. 10:45, inter-local agreement for county-city attorney services. Hello, Carla.
Good morning.
Hello, Mayor.
Hi. Good afternoon. As you recall, we entered into an inter-local agreement with the, oh, first of all, I want to say, I'm, sorry about the camera, I have to figure out a way to make sure that it's available to you in the morning, and that I can take it back in the afternoons after your meeting and load the meetings onto the YouTube channel.
We need Jake back.
Unfortunately, yes. It'd be nice to have an intern all the time. So again, we entered into an inter-local agreement shortly after I came here initially hired as the new county attorney. Prior to having an inter-local agreement, Mr. Flynn was separately employed by the city as city attorney. What we, and because the position of county attorney is now full-time, that's not an option, and so I advised both the council and the commission that what we could do is an inter-local agreement wherein the salary be paid to the county for the services of county, city attorney, provided by the county attorney. And we entered that agreement, and it was set to expire the end of June, and this is basically a new version, with some slightly different wording from the prior version. One particular issue of note is that under paragraph five on page two, the term renewal in fiscal period, I have it set up so that it's self-renewing unless either party provides the other with a 30-day written notice of cancellation. There was some confusion, I think, about whether or not it renewed itself, and obviously none of us sat down to review the agreement during June. The city council did discuss and consider, I guess, at one point cancelling the contract, but they have since reconsidered, and Mary Alice is here to talk with you folks about that. The only thing beyond that that's changed, in the statement of agreement, the language changed a little bit. Just to clarify, it was already in the prior agreement, explaining that the county attorney's civil representation of the city has to be limited by the statutorily mandated duties and responsibilities of the office. In the prior agreement, I think it also referenced, as it is for the county, where we have to sometimes contract out protracted or complex legal matters, the city will have to do the same, because my statutory duty is first and foremost to those requirements outlined by the Montana Code of Anticipated Primary to Prosecution on behalf of the people of the state and to handling youth matters, DN, DJ, DI, followed by advice to county departments and officials. And I included in here, to the extent allowable by the duties, that I would attempt to attend regular and special city council meetings. As with the commission, the workload of the office prohibits me from being able to attend every meeting in full, but certainly if there's a specific agenda item that is legal, I will certainly make the point of being there, or if the court docket prevents it, reschedule for a time where I can be in attendance. So essentially, this is scheduled for the city agenda for next week, I believe?
The third, or next meeting.
And it just requires execution by this body. I don't, I don't know if you voted or not last time, but in any case, it just requires the signature of the chair, assuming you intend to go forward with it. I have no objection, and under the code, it's at the discretion ultimately of the person serving as the county attorney. I believe it's appropriate and beneficial to the community to have a sole prosecutor, especially because we have a number of cases where folks have both district court and city court cases. And I also think, although I provided some information to the city that they can research in future, I'm not sure that financially they would have a better option for somebody to serve as city attorney.
We have not voted on this yet, so that would be something that we could do today.
Carla was being kind, we did discuss it, but it was inappropriate, it was not an agenda item, which I should have caught and didn't, so the vote that was taken couldn't be acted on anyhow. And when we checked into what's required and what has been done, we decided that we would prefer to continue the agreement, assuming the county is willing. It certainly has worked in the past, and I think when some other things get straightened out, it'll continue to work well here. It is much better for the city, we don't, in addition to the fact that you'd have to bring somebody in from out of town at a greater cost, most of the things that come up are in court, where we aren't in court, but we're represented, when tickets are written by, with the sheriff's office, which is our police force, or the dog control, they're on behalf of the city, and those have been prosecuted in a timely manner, and we're satisfied with that. We have special things, as everyone does, water issues, you have to get another attorney anyhow. That is not cheap, we would prefer to save the taxpayers' money, and the situation we have has worked.
We're lucky that we have the relationship we do, and overall, between the county and the city.
Well, that's how it should be.
Absolutely, yes. Well, any questions, Franklin?
No, I have no problem, as long as the city make their decision, and I have no problem as far as the county part of it.
Well, it's different, because this is, it's different with you here, it's different with a new council person. Some of them thought, well, John used to be there a lot. John isn't here anymore, and he really was there, but he doesn't, wasn't necessarily paying any attention to us, which might be a blessing in some cases.
I guess, oh, sorry, I don't want to interrupt.
Go ahead, you almost have to interrupt me, Carla.
The only thing I do want to say, because it is relevant, again, the, the agreement is based on, you folks can come to the agreement, but it cannot occur unless the person serving as county attorney essentially has the discretion to say, yes, I'll do that, or no, I won't, because of the statutory obligations. I am saying, yes, I'll do that, but it's based on the expectation that the budget request from my office will include the monies from the city coming to my office for resources for my office. We're earning it solely and completely alone. We, nobody else in the county is doing the prosecution or representation of the city, it's just my office, me and my staff, and so I have requested that those funds be directed to my budget, over and above flat funding from the prior year. I realize we're not done the budget process, but I just want to throw that caveat out there, because if the, if the commission were to decide that they would use my office as a profit generator, then I would have no motive, and not provide me with the funds that I need to do upgrades and, and provide my staff with a good and efficient working environment, then I would have no incentive other than good citizenship, and I would feel torn about that, but I also think the council understands and expects as well that the county will funnel the funds that they're paying my office, to my office for those services.
There is no increase in the funding that, in this agreement that we had in the past, either.
And I should point out, though, that Mary Alice and I have communicated about the fact that it appears from the most recent statement coming from city payments, that they have overpaid for July and August, they continued on the same monthly payment that they had been paying last year, which was a prorated amount, because we signed the contract a few months after it actually started, or they started making payments, I guess. So the, this is for $18,000 per year, which is a monthly increment of $1,500, but in order to kind of catch up to where they should be, they only owe us like $375 for September, because they paid $2,062, $50 each July and August.
And to your request, I think it would be poor management on our part to take a weed grant for fighting noxious weeds and put it into the general fund. Granted, that's illegal, so it's not a good example, but likewise, I think it would be irresponsible to take monies with this agreement away from the entity doing the work and put it also into the general fund. So I think that's a fair request of you, I think it would be a fair request of any department.
I disagree with that, I think the money should come to the county itself, and then if there's extra need for the attorney office, it could be done in an appropriate manner.
The money that we pay on a similar inter-local agreement, police force, goes to, police force, that goes back to the sheriff's office?
It does, and when they were paying Mr. Flynn, it went into his pocket as salary. So I, I wonder, Mr. Slifter, Commissioner Slifter, if you can explain why you believe it shouldn't go to my department for the use of department? It's not going to me, my salary doesn't change a bit.
Yeah, I know that.
It's going to paper, pencils, printer, toner, ink, some furniture that's maybe less than 100 years old. You know, our office, like the entire top floor of the courthouse, is in need of renovation. We've gone through, last year, the money was allocated to our budget through an amendment by the prior commission, and we used that to significantly upgrade our technology, which was very outdated. We now have new computers, we have a computer digital database, we have an offline cloud server that's hosting digital backups of our documents. However, that was only part of an upgrade that I saw as necessary when I came into this office, and I had advised the commission a year ago that I would be asking again to have those funds allocated, because my office needs the funds in order to operate efficiently. You have one attorney trying to juggle a bunch of balls, and unfortunately, recent months have created a lot of situations that are not normal in a county, that I've had to deal with, in addition to a very, very healthy load of cases to prosecute. The number of cases that are coming through city justice and district court in this county, other counties with similar caseloads have a county attorney and a full-time deputy. So I can't believe that it would be in any way out of line for me to ask those resources to go to my office, so that we might in fact have a summer intern, every summer, upgrade our infrastructure more so that we're more efficient. It seems completely appropriate to me, and I guess I'm, I'd like to hear why it's not, in your mind, not appropriate.
That's just my feeling, that's the way, I think, I think it's a little different with, with the money going right to the sheriff's office, and I think that's a big, big amount of funding there. It may be proven different on this, but at this point, that's, that's my feeling.
Well, I'm not, I'm going to ask you, I'm not going to ask you to sign it today, I'm going to edit paragraph six so that it includes a clause that says the funds will go to the county attorney's budget. If you want to sign it, then we can put it on next week's agenda, if you don't, that's fine, you've put the city in a very terrible position, where they will have to try to find somebody right now, nobody's prosecuting their cases, because as a matter Nobody's prosecuting their cases, because as a matter of the failure to renew and the vote that they had, we've put things on hold for a couple of weeks. You'll have to make a decision next week and let them know, so that they can try to find somebody else to come down here and prosecute. We have numerous fairly serious offenses pending in city court, a number of aggravated DUIs. We have a serious DUI problem in this community. It's both community-based and a great deal of transient traffic that travels through Townsend under the influence, putting our children and our community at risk. We have a number of partner family member assaults that are pending in city court. That's, that's what's at stake.
I, I will make one comment. I, I think that the, one of the things that government has to do is be fair. We can't be working for a friend here and working against someone we don't like here. Everybody has got to be treated exactly, equitably, and fairly. And that applies to our departments, our employees as well, and our fellow elected officials. If a contract with one entity is followed in such a way, and a parallel contract is proposed, it should be followed in the same way, so that we are doing our job of treating everybody equitably. It should not matter what the, the funding is, what the dollar amount is. What should matter is that we are being equitable to all as best we can. Life isn't fair, we understand that, but we have a job to be fair. So Carla, I don't think you have a choice on that. I think it's the right thing to do, so I guess we will have to table this decision for another week.
Thank you.
So, any other comments?
No, I could, I, I'm willing to go either way, but I want, I'd like some more information and.
What information do you like?
Okay, I guess in a roundabout way, if the money goes straight to the attorney's office, I think we should know all the time what it's being used for.
I would assume that you have that information from all your offices.
Yes, my budget is public, as is every department in the county. You know, Commissioner Slifka, I have to say, I would be happy to hear any substantive reasons you have for feeling the way you feel about not wanting the money to go to my budget, but I can't help but feel that it's somewhat personal, because in eight months, we're now almost into the ninth, nine month, ninth month since you came into office. You have never once come to my office. Oh, I apologize. One time you came to remind me about a meeting that, that was on behalf of Sheriff Ludwig. At that time, I tried to bring up some issues of concern with regard to employee confidentiality, county liability, et cetera. You didn't seem to really listen, and you didn't really acknowledge anything I had to say. In the months around that, you've never responded to any of the memos I've sent out. I feel like you have some kind of disrespect or contempt for my office that is not based, as far as I can see, in anything other than a personal opinion. If you want to see whether my office is functioning, why don't you visit my office? Come see how we set it up, see how it runs, see how many, you know, cases we have open in felony and misdemeanor level, in city court, justice court, district court. See how many pending questions are before me from various county departments. You're, my office is open, and you're welcome to come. I would appreciate you making an appointment, so that I, it's obviously not going to work if I'm in court, et cetera. That same offer holds true to members of the public, and I've made it repeatedly. I have no problem with you calling me to task on actual substantive concerns, but I just don't feel like it, I just don't think. I mean, if I was a member of the public who lived in the city of Townsend and wanted to know that crime was going to be prosecuted, that my kids could walk down the street without being run down by an aggravated DUI driver, I'd like to know why this commissioner has a position like that, that, that the city should have a prosecution services provided by the county, but the county attorney's office that's providing the services shouldn't benefit. And it's not, again, doesn't go in my pocket at all, it doesn't change my salary, it's for infrastructure in my office. I think it's a fair question, so in the next week before this comes before the agenda again, perhaps you could find the time to visit my office and bring any questions or concerns that you have. You never have brought any before, so it's, it's not fair, in my mind, to have a negative opinion in my office where you're not giving me the opportunity to have a conversation with you about what your concerns are.
Fine, I'll do that and abolish my concerns, whatever.
I'd still like to know what, who else pays the county for a service, and the money doesn't go to the, the office that's providing the service?
Well, that's one thing I want to know, and there's questions I want to throw out there, I mean.
Well, I'm, I'm confused. Any one specific?
Well, I don't know. If I'm completely wrong, I'll change, I mean, I just, so you have the right to find out and ask about it, you know?
Yeah, well, you have every right. Have you discussed it with the, our city judge, who, who tells me that the cases are being prosecuted, that we have about twenty-five on hold until we can get this set up?
No, I haven't discussed it with anybody.
Apparently, that things are being prosecuted. The, if the money is coming from the city, and the city is satisfied with the results, and the money is going into the office that produces the results, I'm just trying to figure out where you're coming from.
Yeah, well, I'm, like I say, I'm willing to change, I just changed here a while back on a resolution we had on some, real estate effect. I was, you know, I mean, first I was, I wasn't saying I was against, but I wanted to find out more, and I did, and I went along with.
You didn't know this was coming up today, that it was on the agenda? Because I wouldn't.
Right, I didn't know anything about the, the money going back instead of coming here. I just see where it says, you know, we get the fifteen hundred a month.
I had sent a memo around to all the commissioners probably three months ago, or at least two months ago, prior to my budget request, and, and then with my budget request, specifically saying that I was going to be requesting again that the funds from the city be designated to my office. So there's been a few months' notice to the county.
I'm sure that you guys get a lot more paper than we do, and it's a little harder to operate when there's so many people involved. It's just, I don't know if I can put this on our agenda, just go out the Wednesday before the meeting. If we do anything, it has to be on the agenda. I've already gone wrong once, so I'd like to straighten that out. So it would be nice to know before Wednesday whether we can take this up at our next meeting. Will you have time to look into it by then? I mean, that's not much time for you.
Mayor, I think the situation's going to be that they will, they're going to have to table it till Monday for acceptance, vote, signature. You folks can still have it on the agenda for Tuesday, and if the commission refuses to sign it because of Commissioner Slifka's position, then you can just take it off your agenda for Tuesday. And I'll come and talk to you about how to find a city attorney.
There, there's another option, too. We could schedule a meeting for Wednesday at ten o'clock, get it posted. Well, it would have to be Wednesday at one thirty, and to get it posted, and then we can meet on this and make a decision. Then, then you have the information, you need to get it on your agenda.
I have an appointment on Wednesday, I can't, Wednesday afternoon.
All day? I'm available all day, I'm busy.
Unless it's first thing in the morning.
I'm sorry?
First thing in the morning, as a matter of fact.
Um, we could do it. What time is your appointment?
I'm going to be in there by two.
Okay, so we could meet at twelve thirty.
I'd want to before noon.
Uh, we have to, it's best to have it posted for forty-eight hours. I guess that's not in stone. If it's, if it's okay with the county attorney as our legal counsel, could we schedule ten o'clock on Wednesday, even though we don't quite have the forty-eight hours?
What is the purpose of this meeting, I guess?
To vote on this, and make a sign.
I mean, you can do it Monday, next Monday.
If it's Tuesday. We could put it on our agenda. If it's pressing, I don't know how much information you need, or if there's anything we could furnish that, it seems to be it's an internal problem. We're willing to pay the amount we've paid and continue the agreement we had previously.
Right, I agree.
But we should have got, it's our fault we haven't gone on sooner, that's totally our responsibility.
Well, the, the thing is with this is, this isn't new. When, when this was first brought to us, what, August, September last year, the, the decision was to put the money back into the county attorney's account, and it was discussed at that time. There's nothing new here. This has been our practice for the last ten months, year, whatever it's been.
The city, John did this, but he wasn't full-time, which has happened about the time he passed away. So that's all that changed, that we just didn't have it in writing, and it seemed to work fairly well, as our interlocal agreement with the sheriff's office had. If there's a problem, we've been able to get together and work it out, and I'm not aware of any serious problems on either side, but coming into it new, that if you've got concerns, is, is there anything we could do to make it more understandable to you?
No. I'd rather just stop by and visit with you and ask you a few more questions when the time comes. But I think, like I say, I'm flexible. It wouldn't point out to me that this is a procedure that's been going with all the other agencies. That's the way I would, I'm sure I would go. So I don't think there's any, any big problem.
Well, I think, you know, there's a number of places where the, the city and the county share in income for a particular thing. Sometimes it's, it's like CTEP, the, which is now going to be something else, but I forget what it is. And we share the LEPC committee stuff. There's a lot of things that we both get into, and it can seem confusing, but anything you need to know, we can show you what we've paid, and we can, I'm sure that our list budget shows where any money she gets goes, if it's just the money.
Yeah, you bet.
If you're going to your time.
I have a question.
You have one question from the public, John.
If we have a situation like Carla's, a full-time county attorney, John Flynn was not. He had time to play, he had time to do other things, which he did. Carla's a full-time, supposedly a, a full-time one and only. Every hour she spends working with the city means one hour less she works with the county. Now, there is a problem there. We already, our jail system is overloaded because things can't get done. Where is the compensation for us taxpayers for her not to be enabled to perform at her full total capacity? Not because every hour she goes over to the city, it's an hour during the day that she is not dealing with our problems.
John, you're making some assumptions that are.
No, that's not assumptions, I know it for a fact.
No, you're not.
Just to clarify, the city attorney has been operating out of the county attorney's office for many years. Prior to my coming here, John was paid separately as city attorney, but he still did that work out of the county's office and was using county overhead, county staff, et cetera. I don't go over to the city, except to meet with them occasionally for their council meetings. The city court is held in the justice courtroom, again, by an interlocal agreement for the city judge to be the county, the justice of peace serves as the city judge. So that's the reason that this works so smoothly, is that we have the two integrated. There is just one courtroom, there is just one county attorney office, which also functions as city attorney. When the county enters into this agreement, the work of the city in terms of prosecution becomes equal to the work of the county, and I meet my statutory deadlines with regard to criminal cases, I think, with impeccable soundness. Anybody is willing, who's interested in that can come up and check it out, but we haven't missed any court deadlines in any of our cases. We have on occasion extended deadlines, but not very often on my part, it's more often because the defendant wants that. I don't know what Mr. Wright's comment with regard to the jail system is about, because there's nobody languishing in our detention center because of our failure to move a case forward. The courts, both of the courts here, all three of the courts, city court, justice court, district court, the judges are very good, very careful about adhering to the statutory deadlines, the constitutional rights afforded to defendants. We have never had a speedy trial concern be raised in the time that I've been here in any case. Cases are moving along, many, many people are being convicted, most often without a trial, which is a sign of success. It is typical in the criminal justice system that between ninety-five and ninety-eight percent of cases resolve without a trial. In, in my tenure here, the majority of folks have pled to the charges that, that were originally leveled against them. In some cases where it was appropriate, we have reduced charges or modified charges, but it is the maybe five or ten percent of the cases. So there, I'm not aware of any way that the city attorney prosecution has in any way hindered my ability to do county prosecution. And prosecution unfortunately does come before civil advice and representation always. For the most part, the departments of both the county and the city have been patient and understanding about the fact that it takes a few weeks, sometimes a couple of months, to respond to a request that is not time-sensitive, that is not about something being filed in court, where, say, one commissioner's suing the other commissioners, something that requires an immediate response. Finally, and last, the only complaints I'm aware of are from a handful of citizens, a few of whom seem to, don't seem to understand that the county attorney's office is prohibited by law from providing individual legal advice to individual citizens. While I represent the citizens in that, I represent the county as an entity, I do not represent individual citizens, and in fact, I cannot by law. Unfortunately, I, because, I think because Mr. Flynn had a private practice, which he also ran in part out of the county attorney's office, there has been confusion among the community here about whether or not, when someone comes in with a question about a personal, private legal matter, or their, their legal complaint against the county, that I do not function, and I cannot by law function, to help them or even talk to them about that issue. My function is to protect the county from liability. In part, that means I advise the commission, and I hope that they follow the advice. I advise county heads of departments and hope that they follow the advice. And if, and should they not follow the advice, and should the county end up in a, in a pickle because of that, then I have to represent the county, not the individual official who did whatever they did, but the county. And because of that, obviously, I don't represent individual citizens in their grievances against the county. Those are the only people I've heard, and it's a very small, like, on one hand, I could count the number of people who have complained about the services my office has provided in the past year that I have been here. And as far as I understand, it's a misunderstanding, and despite my best efforts to clarify that misunderstanding, it apparently isn't clear. And I don't, there's nothing more I can provide, other than reference to statute to explain to people what this job entails and what my role is. In all of the statutory functions, I believe my office is operating well and efficiently, and the best that we could, given that we have one attorney on staff.
Mr. Wright, most of our business, as our meetings are held in the evening, after the.
That's true, but it takes a lot of preparation and things to do that. I'm talking to her, what's your problem?
You interrupted Mary, Mary will finish.
I was responding to what she said.
I'm sorry, I wasn't through yet, is what she meant. She, if she has to come to our meetings, they're after everything's closed at the courthouse. That's when Mr. Flynn came. Occasionally, we make a phone call. If she's busy, she says, I will get back to you on that when I have time. She doesn't have to spend a whole lot of time. At some point, if we were to recodify our ordinances, which are what our tickets are written on, she has those, she goes to court with them, she doesn't have to talk to us, she has to go to court anyhow. It would seem to be to the advantage of taxpayers, both city and county, if the same person is prosecuting the same regulations that the citizens have passed. I don't think that we take a lot of her time, probably, excuse me, less than John's, because our consideration now are things that very often we do have to, water issues, which are definitely, it's like a specialist, you go to somebody else. I don't think that we're doing the county out of any of her time. And I think if we were, she'd tell us, because after all, they're the people who are paying her salary. We're just asking for some use of the office and her time, and willing to compensate the county, which in turn will make the office hopefully operate more efficiently. Does that make any sense to you?
That does make sense, but I'm going to comment to her statement.
Actually, no, we're going to be done here, we're over time by thirty minutes.
I have one, one minute, give me one minute.
John, no, I'm not. No, I'm not giving you two seconds.
Well, then you're going to shut me down. Because Carla, I have you just contrary to everything that was said. You've been presented with a document that you will not respond to.
That is enough, thank you. Carla, Mary, thank you very much.
And that goes for you too, Laura.
Next on the agenda is Jim Muskovich, JPIA, JPA, Mako Insurance Trust, Introduction and Discussion of Services. I'm going to guess, Ms., hello, Jim, come on in.
I will start by giving you a business card, how about that?
A tray.
There you go.
Thank you, nice to meet you by the way.
Nice to meet you. Good morning, everyone.
And welcome aboard.
Thank you. Well, I will try to be brief since I know that you are running behind and if you've got an idea of where we're at, I'll start with jails.
Okay.
Because that was the first thing that was handed to me when I came on with Mako, was to try and finally get the Montana jail standards adopted. We have, in the time since I've been with Mako in April till now, had and formed two jail advisory groups, of which stakeholders are Mako, MMIA, the Montana Law Enforcement Academy.
Jim, can I interrupt you for one second?
Sure.
Sheriff. I'm wondering if you have any time to stay with us for a while to keep our meeting in order?
Okay.
We have had a little incident here a few seconds ago, it seems to have calmed down now, but I would appreciate your presence if you could.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Jim, I apologize for that.
No problem whatsoever. We have the Montana Law Enforcement Academy and Montana Sheriff's and Peace Officers Association and DPHHS as a portion of the core group. Sheriffs, hi Sheriff, finally, nice to see you. We've invited sheriffs since the second meeting. The third meeting, we hope to have everything finalized and out for adoption on the county level, the jail standards. The jail standards you should have received through Mako offices via email, the only thing that's changed on there are three lines.